Ladies and gentlemen, we are live with audio and shortly video, Facebook.com/monternonny and Zoom video conferencing. So welcome and the meeting will be started by Council President Pro Tem Marcus Griffiths.
Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody as well. I know Councilwoman Copeland is preparing to get on. We heard from Councilman Thompson. Mr. Chair?
Not as of yet, sir.
Okay, so if it's okay.
Yes, he is. He is coming in shortly.
Okay, excellent, excellent. Should I give him a minute? Okay, yeah, we'll just give him a minute. Okay, Councilman Thompson can always hear back on the video. Pastor James, before we begin, you're our first speaker. We have two speakers on today, but before we begin, I'd like to lead with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Delia Parkinson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God with liberty indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, thank you, everybody. I know we had some timing issues at our different locales. So we're gonna start with our first speaker. Pastor James, if you will, take yourself off mute. Welcome to the city council meeting. I hope all is well. Good to see you both.
How are you?
I'm good, very good.
God bless you all. It's good to see everybody. I'm glad and you're making it through the pandemic alright. Praise God, that's right, that's right. You know me, when I come to the meetings, usually it's about quality of life and there's no difference this evening. The main thing is, is the fireworks, which I see calmed down last night. So I'm glad that's happened because we were right around the corner from Graham School and that's where they were doing a lot of the using the fireworks and it's very dangerous too because these young children don't know how to really use the fireworks and they're gonna get somebody's house on fire. So I'm glad to see or glad to have heard last night that it wasn't as bad. Mostly what we heard was off in the distance. Also, the loud music after 10 o'clock. If anything could be done about that, I mean, there's nothing wrong with having a good time, but I can't understand why people play their music that loud. I mean, now you have to scream at each other. You have to yell at each other to really enjoy yourself or just to be heard. Also, along with the quality of life and the noise issue is the landscapers that are starting doing the lawns before 8:00 AM. I don't know what you could do about that, but they are, some of them are starting to start their machines up before 8:00 AM and they need to be letting know that we have a noise ordinance in this city. I've always said that we should be known as the first city of Westchester. We should always be, I feel that we should, we are the first city of Westchester. And that's what I would like for us to really be known as. Between 4th and 5th Street, coming up from Target and driving on the street, there is still a lot of speeding that's going on. And we would like to know or we would like, we would request that speed bumps be put in place. This is something we had discussed before, but it's never happened. Last thing I want to talk about is these houses that are burnt down. Is there any way possible that the city can raise these houses? And tear them down because they're eyesores and they're dangerous, you know? You can get rodent infested homes like that and they should really be torn down if possible. And basically, that is it. That is about all I had to speak on tonight. The main thing is the noise, the noise. I don't understand, you know, people playing their music. There are people that I've seen people that will have gathering in their yard and the music's low during the day and then when it gets night, they turn it up. Just the opposite. And that was it for me. Thank you.
Ms. Robinson, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank God, and I'm glad, I did owe what my husband said. I'm glad to see all of you on here and that you survived the pandemic. I pray that your families are well as well. It's been a challenging time for all of us, but I bless God that we're still alive, we're still alive. My comments were kind of dittoing what he said, what my husband said a few minutes ago. Not sure what, whether he would have had enough time, so I wanted to make sure that we address those issues, especially those of the speed bumps. I mean, I'm almost certain you all have had enough people calling you in reference to the fireworks and it's not just the Mount Vernon issue. It's a, and it's not just a Westchester issue, as we saw last night on the Channel 2 news. Even the city is having a problem, so it's all over. What can be done about it, I'm not sure, but you know, I think that as a safety, as an issue for safety, it can, a spark can cause someone's house to catch on fire. So it can't be, I don't care if they are having fun. First and foremost, it's illegal. So something has to be done in reference to that. But I also wanted to make sure that, you know, something was said in reference to the houses that have burnt out. I understand that it may be a situation where families, the persons who are in there may be deceased. I know one house in particular near us, the owner, the lady is deceased. But somebody has that property. I noticed on yesterday that they had a landscaper and I'm referencing to the property on the corner of 5th Street and Garden Avenue. They had someone come yesterday to cut the bushes down. So that makes it look a little better. It doesn't make it look better for our neighborhood and our community. The one on the corner of 4th Street and McCellin has not been touched. I mean, I walk my dog and I have to literally go out into the street so that I'm not walking under the brush that's coming into the sidewalk. I don't know what the city can do, but something needs to be done about that. And then there is one on the corner of 5th Street at Newber. The same thing, not only does it look bad as a, it's an eyesore, but it is also a haven for rodents and for other animals to then find refuge. It becomes an abode for them. And I do my best to try to keep my yard and my house clear of rodents. So, but after a while, they're gonna start coming from those properties looking for food, especially now that it's become hot. Lastly, I noted I have to write a letter. I was told today by the clerk and that letter is forthcoming in reference to the speed bumps. As my husband said a few minutes ago, we've talked about that once before. I don't know what needs to be done in order to get that because I'm walking my dog and on McCellin, they have speed bumps. I, you know, I'm not understanding how they got speed bumps when Garden Avenue is a throwaway. You come and hit 5th Street, the corner of 5th Street and Garden and they zoom through. We talked about that when it comes to the stop signs and I'm grateful that we have some stop signs, even though sometimes I'm walking and I'm walking out in the neighborhood and I'm seeing people still run those stop signs. But the speed bumps on Garden Avenue between 4th and 5th Street are a necessity. That's not just something we want. That's something that I feel is necessary. They, they turn that corner off of 4th Street and cars are zoom zipping down there. They rarely stop or they slow down at the stop sign at 5th Street and make that turn. School has been out, so it's been a blessing in a way, but it's also been more of a danger because children are now out. So if something could be done about that, I would be grateful for that because that is a safety issue. So as I come to the council all the time and I apologize that I'm just coming back and I'm now coming back with a list of complaints because I do like to come to the council meetings when I wanna, excuse me, wanna commend the city for what it is doing well and I see that there are a lot of things that are going on positive in Mount Vernon. And I want to make sure that our city always is, is a shining light that we, you know, a place that we can be proud of. I'm proud of my city and I defend my city no matter where I go. As I've told you once before, I work in White Plains and I see White Plains has some issues, you know, just like any other city. So I'm proud of my city and I just want to see us continue to grow and to do better because we are better, because that's who we are. The last thing I do also want to bring up before the council is the in my walking, you know, the COVID-19 allowed you to walk more than you do most of the time. So when I was driving by things, now I'm walking past things and the Betty Shabazz house, I don't know what's going on with that. But I think that that's a landmark, that there should be some kind of, something there that shows that that's what that house represents. The same thing with Nina Simone's house. And I'm told by somebody else, even Stephanie Mills' house does not have a placard or something out in front of it that says that these are people who were residents of Mount Vernon. That's not only something that we should be proud of as Mount Vernon Knights, but it also becomes a selling point for our city. Because Mount Vernon has produced some very, very educated, very popular, well-known people and I think that that should be noted. Thank you so much for your attention. I apologize because I didn't do the protocol in the beginning, but I do recognize and honor all of you. So thank you so much.
Thank you both. We appreciate your comments and concerns and being our continuing eyes. I do see our council president Lisa Copeland back on. Madam President, would you like to take it from here? We also have our Councilman Derek Thompson who was able to chime in. Councilman Thompson, of course, you could listen to the video, to Pastor James's first responses, but we're glad that you're here. Councilwoman, Council President Copeland, you want to take it from here?
Did the council get responses? I'm sorry, I had to step away.
Not yet, so.
You want to start?
Yes, I can, so. I appreciate, again, like I said, I appreciate the both of you. We're all concerned with the fireworks as well. I did notice that it was calming down in the acts of celebrating. Celebrating is one thing, but being a danger to others is another thing. I grew up in the Bronx until I was 10 and we did fireworks galore. When I came to Mount Vernon, we had more space and we thought we could do more. We found that it was not the better place to do fireworks. I had a neighbor who was in the Holocaust. And when we lit off those fireworks, she reacted negatively. It actually affected her. And I thought it was a good idea to just take them down the street, but I just evolved into not doing fireworks anymore. So I get the thrill, but there is a danger. Your neighborhood is, has too many burnt out houses and they're huge, beautiful houses as well. I wish we had a fund to be able to take down the houses on, from the city's perspective, but tearing down a house could cost $100,000. So just in your neighborhood alone, the city would be spending $300,000. I think it's worth it to do, but it is an extreme cost. One of the issues that we have in our community is that people don't have insurance, right? So these estates don't have the insurance in place possibly. And we don't have a wills in place. People pass on and then we don't really know who the heirs are. So this is things that happen in our community and it plagues us. Some of those houses, as bad as they look, can be repaired. So if they could be repaired, it's not in the financial interest of the owner for the city to tear it down. And that's where we get into this mix of it looking bad for a period of time, much longer than it needs to be. And I say all that to say to not defend the city, but just to bring the reality to the situation that we all have, right? So it's, it's a challenge and we have torn down some houses that we were in fear of them falling on people. We've had to take emergency action on some because they were falling towards the sidewalk. So it's, it's a serious concern, but you're right, all the ones that you named, the visuals went in my head and absolutely huge eyesore and they've been there too long, so I thank you for that. I'm not a big fan of speed bumps, but Garden Avenue is a very wide block, right? And it's very inviting for speeding, especially when you're trying to get that shortcut down to Sanford Boulevard. So as much as I've told people, I'm not in favor of speed bumps, I think on Garden Avenue, it'd be an opportunity for a speed bump because it's so wide and it's so inviting and they're long blocks too. So I, I'm gonna break my own rule of not suggesting speed bumps and possibly saying that your block and the blocks down towards 3rd Street are candidates for speed bumps because they meet a criteria, right? They're shortcuts and they're extremely wide. I know where Graham School is, there's speed bumps because of the school. I believe there's a speed bump there, right? But the school is there, so I automatically slow down, right? But, so I think, I think we need to look into that. As far as the historic homes, I'm a big proponent of the historic homes and at least a plaque to show. I think Mount Vernon is a great candidate for a tour where people could drive around and get a feel. I think y'all's neighborhood and the neighborhood over where Nina and Betty lived is a great site for African-American progress and a place where African-Americans who progressed moved, we were allowed to move. I think it's a huge story there. And it's one of those things that I really wish I could get done before I leave the council. We have a lot of work to do. I can say that I was with the mayor yesterday after, or Monday, after our council meeting and she was just as appalled with the fireworks as you guys are, right? I know there's gonna be more enforcement going on as well. Coming here today, there was an officer flying up my block and he was going after somebody that went through a stop sign. So I think the mayor getting into her groove after COVID, we're gonna try to get this city enforced the way our residents deserve for it to be enforced. So I, and I see your concerns. One thing that I thought you were gonna mention and he didn't mention was Memorial Field because that's right there in your neighborhood as well. I know the county is working on that also. And the walkability is more, and I agree with you, the walkability is more noticed now than ever before. Because now that you're trapped in your house, now you find yourself wandering around your own block. You've gotten so in the luxury stage of just getting in the car and sipping everywhere. And when I walk, I, you notice much, much more, much more. You notice the sidewalks that are cracked. You notice the trees that aren't as healthy as they could be. This is all life stuff, so I'm gonna leave you with that. Our, all the council members are gonna hopefully add to what I'm saying, but again, thank you. Thank you for your consideration and God bless you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Farquharson?
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening to everyone. Thank you Pastor James and Mrs. James for being here, for sharing your concerns with us. So Councilman Griffith did give a very comprehensive response. I'll just add a couple of things. So one, you know, you're right that the loud music, the ordinance for loud music needs to be implemented and that, you know, when you call the police for someone who's, who's playing loud music, there's an instrument that they can use to measure to see if the decibels are being exceeded. And so that's the least you should expect if you engage the police department or on that ordinance, if it's, you know, consistently and persistently disturbing your peace. So that they should be able to come and then advise those who are violating the law, the noise ordinance, that they are doing so based on the codes of the city. So I hope you will utilize that. The other thing, you know, the landscapes, you know, which is another noise ordinance, that's something else that perhaps, you know, if, you know, you, and it's not your purview, but perhaps you can be neighborly and ask your neighbor to ask their gardeners to not arrive so early. I'll tell you, one of the things that's on our agenda for consideration is banning the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. Because not only are they environmentally offensive from a, you know, respiratory perspective, but also from a noise perspective. And so that's something that is on the agenda for the council to consider. And I know that the law department is working diligently on that, so we expect to see that soon. But I'm sure, you know, legislative action like that taken by this council will improve and increase the level of wellness that you're experiencing in this lovely community we call home. The other thing is, I know Councilman Griffith talked about not being a fan of speed bumps. In 2019, for that budget, we did, if you recall, Councilman Griffith, we did put in there for electronic speed monitoring devices, which work. All the evidence point to those, I, you know, items actually working and controlling speeding in the community. And that was something that was budgeted, you know, I don't know what the state of our budget is now, but I think it's something that we should continue to pursue. There are, you know, and I know that the technology is ever evolving. They are solar, they are mobile, we can move them around. And, and that's a way of changing behavior. Right? You know, so you use those devices to change behavior and I hope that we will have the opportunity to still pursue that. So we'll take a look at, you know, you know, what is reflected in our budget this year to see if that's something we can continue to pursue. I support the idea of identifying the homes of all these distinguished Mount Vernon Knights, people who have shared this community so that, you know, so that we elevate our historical significance. So I thank you both very much for coming and sharing your concerns with us. And, you know, I'm glad to see that you are well and I hope you will continue to be safe and well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Duarte?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone, and thank you Pastor James and Mrs. Robinson for joining us this evening and sharing your concerns. I would just add to what has already been said, hopefully not being repetitive. With regards to the issues of the fireworks, the noise ordinance, the noise ordinance violations, these are all opportunities, I believe, for our police department and also our fire department to engage with our youth in a more productive and constructive way as opposed to criminalizing these activities. And, and so I know that the police commissioner is very much a supporter of the community policing initiative. And I hope that these will be opportunities for the police department to engage with our youth and help alleviate some of these quality of life concerns in a more constructive way. With that, I agree with Councilwoman Farquharson with regards to the speed monitors. We find that in terms of changing behavior, the research shows that that is more effective and we did fund for it, but we have to see where, where we can review and we set that opportunity to fund those, to fund those speed monitors. With regards to the extraordinary people that are from Mount Vernon and those homes and those locations, your neighborhood is quite rich in history. And I believe that the city was awarded a grant, I believe, last year to research the, a lot of the civil rights history of this city. And I'm not really sure what the status of that grant is or the status of that research, but I believe it was meant to identify a lot of these locations and events in history of significance that deserve and to make recommendations on how to highlight them and, and make, make the public more aware. So we have received a grant for that, I believe. I just don't know what the status of that. We can certainly look into it and see where we are. But as we began to kind of open up again, we're all now catching up with a lot of the initiatives and programs that we had started some months ago. But thank you so much for coming this evening. God bless you all. Stay safe and be well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Thompson?
Yes, all has been, all has been said tonight, so just want everyone to know that we are on it and we're gonna do the best we can to make sure that our city is taken care of. That is all.
You're becoming my favorite. No, much as, thank you, Councilman Thompson. And I could never call you Councilman Randolph because of those brief remarks. But my colleagues covered pretty much about the, the housing and the fireworks, but in terms of the historic sites in Mount Vernon, some 20 years ago, when I was first on the African-American Advisory Board of Westchester, Dr. Sproul did a comprehensive list of all the houses in Mount Vernon where dignitaries and other people lived. And we had this discussion some 20 years ago. It's already done. We don't need a grant. If I could find my notes from the African-American Advisory Board or call to the county, we had the Delaney sisters, Sidney Poirier, Nina Simone, and the list goes, Dr. Betty Shabazz, and the list goes on and on. Myself and Councilman Griffith had, you know, through the Betty Shabazz Board, we had the paperwork ready to make that home a national historic site before, I think, four or five different mayors and so much other stuff has happened in between then. So we just need to revisit what we have. I'm, I'm not clear on the grant, but I know the research has been done. Dr. Sproul did it. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. It's done. We could just move it forward with this new administration. So thank you to the Robinsons and to Elder Robinson, Zelda Robinson, I want to say, you gave a powerful testimony for Audrey Tracy's mother. And I just, I didn't get a chance to speak to you. I had to run out, but God bless you for that. And thank you so much for staying involved and bringing these things to our attention. We'll go on with our referrals now. Clerk, if you're ready, Deputy Clerk?
Yes, I am.
Did I hear something? Okay. No, we have to. Legislation in color works. Councilwoman Duarte?
Okay, thank you, Council President. Item number four is called for. Item number six is called for. Item 14 is called for. Items 30, 30 is on the agenda. 31 is on the agenda. 32 is on the agenda. 33 is on the agenda. 34 is on the agenda. 43, I believe, I called for. 45 is called for. 46 is called for. 47 is called for. 49 is for information. I have one add-on. No, I think I have more than one add-on. I have one add-on for the law department on the agenda. And another one from the, from DPW on the agenda. And I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Human Resources, Councilman Thompson?
Yes, sorry, thank you. I know I had four on the agenda. I didn't have, well, I had four items. I don't have them with me, but I believe it was 31, which was for information. The one after that was on the agenda. The following three were on the agenda. So the first one was 31, if I, if I'm not mistaken?
36 that you have for information, 37 for the agenda.
It was 37 and the two following. Was it 38, 39?
And 38 and 39 were agenda items also, yes.
Yes, and then we have the add-on.
Yes, and you have four, four items.
Yes, on the agenda. And that concludes mine. I have, I have the resolutions for tonight. I just left my other paper.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Councilman Thompson. Public Safety Codes, Councilwoman Farquharson?
Thank you, Madam President. Items 1, 2, 9, 16, and 17 are called for. Items 18, 19, 28, and 29 are for information. Items 42 and 44 are called for, and I have one add-on, Madam President, that's enumerated Item, thought I saw it.
It's for your 5G?
Yeah.
Legislation.
Oh, there it is. Item number 15, Madam President. That ends my referral.
Thank you. Councilman Griffith, Finance and Planning?
Thank you, Madam President. For simplicity, all of my items are for information, with the exceptions of items 3, 5, and 8. I'll read the ones for information. Items 10, 7, 11, 12, 13, 15, 20, 21 was enacted, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 7, 35, 40, 41, and finally 48. I have two items on the agenda, which are corrections from our June 10 meeting, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Zinnzen at home.
Thank you. Councilwoman Farquharson?
Aye, and at home.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Present and out.
I'm sorry?
Present.
In your location, sir, I'm sorry.
I'm out, I'm actually out in Westchester today.
Thank you, sir. And Council President Copeland?
Out in Westchester? What is it, anyway? Present. Here in the memorial room. Let's start with our legislative legislation in Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number one, I have an ordinance authorizing a two-month leave of absence for the various, various members within the Department of Public Works, effective June 21st through August 21st, 2020, so moved. Is there a second?
Second, sorry, Madam President.
On the question?
I have a question. So I'm just wondering, what's going on? This is an add-on, and I'm wondering what's triggering all of this?
So these, let me see, there's one, two, three, four, five members of DPW who are transferring from their current positions to motor equipment operator positions. That basically, they are driving the sanitation trucks, and what's happening is that because they're working in a position outside of their title per our contract with Teamsters 456, they are entitled to differential pay. The comptroller is not paying the differential pay, and so to attempt to alleviate the situation because they need the drivers, they are transferring them into this title so that they are paid their, they're paid for the work that they're doing.
I think I need more clarity.
Did any other councilperson have a question on this?
So, Councilwoman Duarte? Councilwoman Duarte, did you contact the comptroller to find out why she's not making the differential pay?
I did not. I did not contact the comptroller. I didn't have the opportunity to do that. I spoke with the commissioner earlier today to discuss more detail to understand these movements or these moves, but, so no, I have not had the opportunity to reach out to her.
Don't you think it's a good idea?
Sure.
Did any other councilperson have a question on this before? Okay, Councilwoman Farquharson, you can go to your second.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate Councilman Griffith's question, and I just feel like we don't have enough, and it's being rushed. So, so, you know, I feel like we need more answers because you're saying that they were operating in one role, in one title, weren't being paid their differential, are transferring to another title where they're going to be, I'm going to presume, get paid at a higher rate. Is that their original position? I just don't understand.
Maybe Corp Counsel should come in on this part? Corp Counsel?
I don't have anything on that.
You don't have anything on it?
If I can, I can give you some clarity.
Who's, who's, oh, is it? Councilman?
Thompson.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes, I know, I know within DPW itself, you have workers who are actual garbage collectors, and then you also have those who are drivers. Some, some have been doing overtime as drivers, and some have, you know, if you, if you're just a trash picker, you're on the back of the truck, but if you're a driver, you get paid at a different salary. So they've been doing the work, but they haven't been getting paid. That's just one instance. There may be others, but I know that's just one instance that I'm aware of.
Also, if I may, Madam President?
Yes.
In order to drive the truck, you have to have CDL license. So these gentlemen are licensed appropriately to drive these trucks because of the needs in the department. We have, I believe, 14 routes, and we don't have as many trucks to run all of our routes, and they just need the drivers. So the contract with the union does allow for workers to work outside their title when the necessity presents itself, and for that, they are entitled to the differential pay. So in this instance, the department has the need for the CDL drivers, and instead of having them work in a laborer's position or in a sanitation worker's position, which is what they were doing, they've been now reallocated to drive these trucks. And so I think that this is a measure to reflect the reality of what's happening right now, and also so that the comptroller will pay them the proper salary that they are due.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Griffith, you had a follow-up question?
Do, so, so what's going on with the drivers that these gentlemen are replacing?
Your question is directed to who, Councilman Griffith?
The committee chair.
Okay. Councilwoman Duarte?
I believe that there, there has been a retirement, that's one shortage, and I don't believe that they are necessarily replacing anybody. I think that this is, this is just how they are operating. These gentlemen have a CDL license, and they are operating as drivers of these trucks, of sanitation trucks.
Thank you. Councilman Thompson, you had something to add?
Yes, these, these workers have been driving these trucks because we have so many positions open where they've been operating as the regular pickup gentleman at a lower rate, where when they were drivers, acting drivers, per se, on separate shifts as well, the comptroller is fully aware of this. There have been conversations about it. I also scheduled a meeting to meet with the comptroller. I was going to bring up that in our discussion when I tried to schedule a meeting for finances with the comptroller, but she neglects to return my emails and/or calls, but she is fully aware of what's going on, and she refuses to pay these individuals, which is unfair, and I think it's just disgusting because I'm sure her check is in the mail, so their check needs to be in the mail as well. So I just don't want to sugarcoat it. It is what it is. These people need to be paid because they've been doing the work, and it, and it's, it's a shame on anyone's part who hinders these young people, as well as middle-aged people, from getting their funds, and they've been putting in the time. So I don't think that we need to hold this any longer. I think we need to move forward so these people can get the money that they deserve and that they, that they have done the work for. That is all.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Oh. Duarte?
Just one final note with regard to that. The comptroller, as I understand it, will not accept the RPCs for these unless there is legislation supporting it. So that's also the reason why this is before us.
And even though Corp Counsel didn't speak, I will speak and say this: We certainly don't need any more lawsuits regarding labor issues within the city of Mount Vernon. We cannot afford it when we can handle it internally. Roll call?
I have something else to say, Madam President.
I don't see, I didn't see you. You're not in my screen.
So, yeah, so I have something.
Well, I didn't, I didn't recognize you either. Hold on a second. Corp Counsel, you wanted to respond to what I said?
Yeah, I'll just add, there's quite a number of employees who are not being paid correctly. I've reached out, including in my own department, I, including myself personally, but I won't bring that up, that are not being paid properly. I've written at least 15 emails to the comptroller to try to get her to give me a response as to why people aren't being paid properly, and to give me a legitimate business reason for not recognizing the 2020 salary resolutions to which I have not gotten a response. I am concerned about additional lawsuits because there's a failure to recognize overtime in some instances and all of these kinds of workarounds we've been trying to do. I think tonight's legislation is just another piece of the puzzle where there's a workaround to try to get people properly paid in a timely fashion.
Thank you. Councilwoman Farquharson?
Thank you, Madam President. So actually, this is the first time that this is coming before this body, and it's coming as an add-on, which does not provide the proper opportunity or avenue to fully discuss this matter. But a couple things. One, I got an email, I made an inquiry about having four people on one truck, four pickup employees. And what Deputy Commissioner Bush said is that because we are short trucks, that, and we have this increase in refuse, they have put additional people on the backs of the trucks to help to pick up the garbage in a more timely way. He says we don't have the trucks, there are four trucks, because the money has not been paid by the comptroller. So we, here we are, we are promote, we are transferring, shifting five people into being drivers. My question is, what trucks are they going to drive? And so then the other thing, just one more second, Madam President, if I may.
How about I say no? No, go ahead.
The thing is that, okay, we are in dire financial straits, and I understand, the last thing I want is for us to be sued because we can, we cannot afford that. The last thing I want is for anybody to be denied or declined payment that they are due. But we also want to make sure that we are being judicious with how the limited resources of the city are being used. We have not considered any kinds of layoffs as of yet, and I'm saying it's only a matter of time before we're going to have to face that wall. And so I'm just wondering, with all of these shifting and moving around, how that will play into our financial situation? Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. No, Councilman Thompson, we're going to vote on this.
Can I just respond?
No, we're going to vote. Discussion's over. Call a roll.
Councilwoman Duarte, how do you say? How do you say you?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farquharson?
She's on mute, but I don't know, she's not, doesn't say.
Sorry, no, no, I'm sorry, no.
Thank you, thank you. Councilman Griffith?
He's on mute.
I'll take him off. He's not on mute. Councilman Griffith?
I'm thinking, my brain is on mute.
I'll come back to you, sir, if you'd like.
Can you?
I, I.
We've done it before. Remember the question that I didn't want to vote on, that I voted on that was so bad? But we can do it, but.
Parliament's preference, I will skip and come back to you. Councilman Thompson, how say you, sir?
Absolutely aye. Let them pay their bills.
And Council Pres, I will come back to you now. Councilman Griffith?
I'm going to vote aye.
Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number two, I have an ordinance authorizing motor equipment operator Ray Rogers a one-year leave of absence effective May 4th, 2020 through May 3rd, 2021, so moved.
Second.
Thank you.
On the question?
On the question, is this the same?
Waiting for your recognition. Don't make me walk away. Councilman Griffith?
Is this the same circumstance as the previous piece of legislation?
Your question, your question's directed to the chair?
If she can answer.
Councilwoman Duarte?
Thank you. Very similar. So this gentleman is moving into a foreman's position. He was previously motor equipment operator, and he is moving into a foreman's position. So this is, this is similar. The difference here in why the time period is longer is because he is moving from, his position is currently with the Teamsters Union 456, and the foreman's position is a CSEA position.
So, Madam President?
Hold on. Any other councilperson have a question before Councilman Griffith goes? Councilwoman Farquharson?
I just had a question about whether or not a vacancy exists for a foreman?
Yes.
Yes. I. Councilman Griffith?
So normally, when we do these leave of absences, they're for one year because somebody is leaving a position and going to a different position permanently. Prior legislation, is that only on a temporary basis, and this piece of legislation intended for a permanent basis?
Well, I believe it's, I'm sorry, if I may respond. I believe that they would be in provisional status until it becomes permanent. That's my understanding of how the process works, and that's why they're requesting the one-year leave of absence.
Every, oh, you had another question? I was going to, but I still didn't recognize you, because maybe I was going to say something or someone else. I'm going to have to bounce down there, just see it. I could see it happening. You're going to have to box these things. Councilman Griffith? Yes. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I'm thinking, no. So, yes, I know how the process works, and yes, normally it's a one-year leave of absence. So prior legislation is for permanency, why didn't they ask for a one-year leave?
My understanding is that the prior legislation was for members who are still Teamster 456 members, and the contract calls for a minimum of two months, and so that's what the request was for, a minimum of the two months, that's compliant with the contract.
Is there any other question? Okay.
None. Councilwoman Duarte, how say you?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farquharson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with Westchester County Department of Environmental Facilities for solid waste and recyclables disposal for refuse disposal district number one, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Is there a second?
Second, I'm sorry.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Farquharson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number four, I have a resolution granting the State of New York authority Item number four, I have a resolution granting the State of New York authority to perform the adjustment for the city of Mount Vernon and agreeing to maintain facilities adjusted via the state-led contract for the Lincoln Avenue Bridge crossing over the Hutchinson River Parkway. So moved.
Second. On the question? Councilman Griffith?
Has there been any public notification of how this bridge is going to be removed and when it's going to be replaced? When we had the Third Street Bridge removed, there was a lot of community engagement, a lot of information, the tours, the detours, et cetera. We knew that Lincoln Avenue was going to come this year, but I've heard of no community outreach for how this is going to be handled in a very, very, very busy corridor in Mount Vernon and Pelham.
Councilwoman Duarte, can you respond, or should I ask the mayor?
I don't have detail as to their timeline and when they will begin working. This in particular is to, you know, these are agreements leading up to the actual work being done. But I'm not aware of what their timeline is, so perhaps the mayor can have more information on that.
Now, this is, this isn't, since we're on the question, this is really, I guess I'm taking a point of privilege here, and I'm gonna recognize the mayor. Do you have information on the the timeline for this project?
We were scheduled to meet with the New York State Department of Transportation. They were to come here personally, and then we were to do a Zoom. It has been pushed back. They're just asking for the agreement so that they can start the process. And then we will also engage in the public conversation about how we will reroute traffic as that goes on with so much being delayed on the state level with COVID. We're just trying to get the legislation passed so that we can continue to do the work as, you know, as, as is needed in the community. So we are waiting on the timeline, and we are working with the State Department of Transportation on the timeline, but nothing will be implemented until we thoroughly address how it will impact traffic and safety in our community.
So I would ask that, when you meet, if you could invite the committee, Councilwoman Parkinson and the chair, Councilwoman Duarte?
Absolutely.
Part of that discussion?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Roll call? Oh, you had it. Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte? Councilwoman Parkinson?
She's on mute.
Yes, yes.
Councilman Griffith?
How did you rest? Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Item number five, I have an ordinance authorizing the funding of the CHIPS. That's the Consolidated Local Street and Highway Improvement Program budget line in the amount of $500,000. So moved.
Second. On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Item number six, I have an ordinance authorizing the Department of Public Works to retain tectonic engineering consultant, geologists, and land surveyors, DPC, for the certification of the remediation of Memorial Field. So moved.
Second. On the question?
Madam President?
Uh, yes, Councilwoman Duarte.
So I just want to state that this is, we're moving along with the Memorial Field project, and this is one of just the final notes to submit to the DEC so we can finally get past our consent order and our issues with the DEC. So I'm very excited that we are here at this point.
Thank you. Any other? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Councilwoman, Council President, I'm sorry, Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number seven, I have an ordinance adopting and enacting Chapter 268 of the Code of the City of Mount Vernon in its entirety entitled Independent Counsel. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
I have a question, Madam President.
Uh, yes, Councilwoman Parkinson?
So, so I disagree with this in principle. I think that the fact that we have had the, the experience ourselves as a body to retain special counsel because of things that transpired, I think leaving it up to one person or having to go to court to do it is going to, it doesn't bode well. And even though we may have a more harmonious relationship right now in the city, there's not, there's, there's, we don't know what the future holds. All right, you know, we'll have subsequent mayors in the future, and we don't know what that holds. So I disagree with this in principle. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other councilperson want to speak before I ask the court counsel to say something? I'm looking to see if anybody else is. No. Corporation counsel, I was, I was not at the, unfortunately, at the meeting on Monday due to my Democrat, well, democracy in action. So could you, like, give me a brief report on how we're handling this legislation?
Sure. Basically, since I've gotten here as a corporation counsel, I have gotten no cooperation for the comptroller's office. The comptroller, through her counsel, however, without any consultation from the corporation counsel's office, has filed three actions that I find to be frivolous. Without the comptroller even coming and giving us an opportunity to work within the system as intended in the charter, my office has been completely bypassed. And what I find interesting is that there's a constant discussion about laying off employees due to the COVID and the economy as opposed to more of a concern about the amount of money, which is untold, unknown to anyone, that is going to the attorney through the comptroller's office independently to which she, the comptroller, and her attorney have both willfully failed to give any information on how much he's being paid. So for me, it is very necessary to have an organized process by which we can shine some light on the legal expenses that we are forced to incur due to the comptroller bypassing this office and hiring counsel to an amount unknown to people. You currently have the comptroller filed an action against voluntary board members of the Board of Ethics suing them personally for a million dollars at an amount unknown to be paid by the taxpayers. It is so offensive to me that we could start having conversations about laying off employees without trying to get a light on the city's finances and how much money is being spent frivolously. So the intent of the charter is very clear, that the corporation counsel is the legal advisor. And that needs to be respected. If, 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 if I have a conflict, I'm supposed to disclose the conflict, but I can't do that if my office is being completely bypassed, particularly when I have no idea what's going on. And it should be noted that there are no checks and balances on these legal fees because I never see those legal bills. They are paid directly by the comptroller in an amount only known to her and the attorney.
So corporation counsel, you, 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 what, if there is a conflict between the branches of government, please explain to the public what the process is, how it should, what the process actually is, how it should happen.
Well, first off, the comptroller is not a branch of government.
No, I know.
Okay.
So I know, I'm clear, but I'm talking about.
Okay, so there, there are other sections in the charter, and I won't take up too much time with this.
No, I think the public needs to understand. Take all the time you need. I need them to understand how we got here, sir.
Okay, well, listen, every word that comes out of my mouth will probably end up in some litigation papers. Even words that I have not said have ended up in litigation papers. A lot of it is retaliatory because I told the person that I didn't find that the actions that were being taken were in the best interest of the city of Mount Vernon. But anyway, the city council has the ability to hire special counsels in other areas of the charter. But the charter for the corporation counsel, it is intended to be the chief legal officer of the city. And what is intended is that if the corporation counsel has a conflict, then they are to indicate that they have a conflict. And we know in the past that has not always worked out well, but that's why you have, have the court system, right? To, to say that. But if it's to work correctly, all the legal fees should, all the legal aspects should go through the corporation counsel. It should not be by, the corporation counsel's office by no means should be bypassed.
Thank you. Did any other councilperson have anything else on this? Roll call then. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Duarte, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Just to, to distinguish some from our past experience. Previously, the corporation counsel did not provide any support to the city council, if you recall. We didn't have a corporation counsel present during most of our meetings. And, and in the instances that we did need to take action and there was a conflict, we passed legislation. It is public knowledge as to who we retained and what we retained them for. So the distinction here is that we don't, we don't have any information or line of sight into the legal activities that the comptroller has engaged in. This, this code spells out a specific process that will support any efforts to try to enter into compliance.
Thank you. Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parkinson? I'm, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Parkinson?
I said no.
Thank you. She indicates no. Councilman Griffith?
Yes, absolutely.
Councilman Thompson?
Definitely, yes.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye, 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 aye. Human resources.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll start with number eight. I have an ordinance authorizing the transfer of all remaining 2019 funds to fiscal year 2020 in the Department of Veteran Services. So moved.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
On the question? Roll call?
Councilwoman Duarte?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith?
Aye.
Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
And Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parkinson, kindly adjust your mic, please. Thank you, Madam.
What do you want me to do with it?
Your volume is better now. We can hear you now. Thank you.
Next, I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Career Visions LTD. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Madam President, if I may?
Uh, yes, Councilwoman Parkinson?
Thank you, Madam President. So I did ask about evaluation. Did you have any evaluation information to share?
Your question is directed to who?
The chairperson, the chairperson.
Councilman Thompson?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear a question.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I hear you.
I was asking if you had any evaluation information. How is this program going to be evaluated? $6,000, it's a short timeframe, 20 students, what's the, you know, how are we evaluating outcomes?
That was explained to you on Monday when we went through it. The mayor also explained to you the process. This is a granted fund on the most part. The evaluation process will be an ongoing process where it will be tangible for you to see it. You know, see the, the, the program has to happen in order for you to get an evaluation of what went on. And if we're not pleased with it, then the following year to come, we won't utilize it. But however, we do need to move forth with this and have this take place. Does that answer the question?
Not really.
No?
So let me say this. Wait, I'm getting feedback. Okay, am I unmuted now? I am, right? So, I mean, I wasn't here, so I'm not gonna, I was gonna, I'll just leave it. But we certainly can't find out until after the program is, and I think they do an evaluation at the end with the students who participate, and that's how you.
And that's what I was asking about, Madam President.
Do this work, so I know you get that.
Oh, yes. You, you get feedback from the children as well as the.
I think the mayor would like to say something.
Oh, good.
The mayor is not running this meeting, though. I am, and she ain't recognized. Councilman Thompson, continue with just, as the chair.
As, as all programs, if you will, every program gets an evaluation from those who partake in that program. That valuation, evaluation slip is sent out. You know, everyone fills it out anonymously, and then they turn it in so we can get the feedback. In order for you to get the feedback, you have to see how the program is working, so then you can get that feedback. In order to get that feedback, the program has to be in place.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Mayor Sean Patterson Howard, did you want, have some input on this? I have to take a point of personal privilege since you're not a voting member of this body.
Right, well, since we are not in person.
On the question?
Yes, since we're not in person, and the commissioners, who would usually be there to answer questions, are not here. We can make sure in the future that they are, but this is a program that is $300 for 20 students each at a cost of $6,000 for them to learn video production skills. At the end of the project, clearly, they will have to produce a project that demonstrates their skill acquisition and their mastery of what they were taught during the program. They will also participate in an evaluation that talks about their satisfaction. So there is a qualitative evaluation, but there is also an evaluation of the skills that they have developed during the project. And these young people then go around our community and begin to capture video and learn how to tell positive stories or discuss their pain and, and their struggles as young people through video technology. So there is certainly an evaluation piece in place.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Madam President, if I may.
Okay.
Madam President, last time, the mayor was here and she spoke regarding the second legislation, and she did say that it was a, you said it was a software, correct, Madam Mayor? For $15,000, but that's not how the legislation is written.
I didn't say it was a software. I said that we've been into kind, oh, I haven't been recognized, sorry.
I just wanted to point it out to Madam President.
We're on number nine. We're on number.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
Number 10. So you're out of order on that one. So let's roll call on nine.
Thank you, Madam President.
My pleasure.
Councilwoman Duarte, how say you, Madam?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Griffith? Councilman Thompson?
Aye.
Councilman, Council President Copeland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me get to the next. I have an order, I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Career Visions LTD for the Youth for Life program. So moved.
Second.
On the question? Councilwoman Parkinson, I knew you were gonna have your hand up on that one.
Madam President, that's what I was referring to before. Oh, I thought the mayor had left. Because I wanted Mayor Patterson Howard just to provide a little. Because, um, I wanted Mayor Patterson Howard just to provide a little more clarity on that, on this particular item, as to what we're get, you know, what the city, the children, the, the department is getting for this money. Um, so that's what I was referring to. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, since I have to take a point of personal, uh, privilege again, since the mayor is not a voting body and we've moved and seconded this legislation, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a contract that we're entering into because we have applied for a seven hundred thousand dollar plus grant from the Federal Department of Health and Human Services. It is a competitive grant. It works with our young people around developing, um, life skills, especially around relationship building, for sex, for violence prevention, for workforce development. Um, as we know, the city provides through the taxpayers less than twenty-five percent of the youth bureau's budget, um, for services that we render to the community. And seventy-five percent of our budget is from federal and state and county funded monies. And so there are times where our staff does not have, um, the full capacity to apply for these grants, especially large federal competitive grants, and so we engage, um, grant writers and, uh, other consultants to assist us with that, and that is one of these. So we are asking for the city to author, the council to authorize us to enter into a contract for fifteen thousand, um, so that we can apply for seven hundred thousand dollars plus funds.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Is there any other question on this? Let me look through the roll here. Did anyone, no, no, no. Okay, uh, roll call.
Councilwoman Duarte.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilman Griffith. Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council president Copeland.
Aye.
Thank you.
I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Westchester County Department of Senior Programs and Services. So moved.
Second. On the question? Roll call.
Councilwoman Duarte.
Aye.
Councilman, councilwoman Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilman Griffith.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council president Copeland.
Aye.
Hold on, let me read this thing first.
Item number twelve.
I have an ordinance authorizing the Department of Recreation to accept a donation of a, uh, fifty-four baby grand piano. So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Madam President, I do have a question.
Yes, Councilman Griffith.
Do we know where in the Dole Center this will be housed? Do we know what room it may go into?
Uh, Councilman Thompson?
Hold on. I don't know exactly where it's gonna be, um, located. I'm sure it's going to be located in the, um, the auditorium of the Dole Center, where the old piano used to be, on a stage.
Oh. Thank you. Does it answer your question, Councilman?
Are we getting rid of, um, uh, Councilwoman Ferguson, yes. Are we getting rid of the other piano that was there? Or, or is it gone?
It is, it's been gone. It's, that piano has been gone. That's why we're trying to get this donation for the new one.
All right, thank you.
Praise the Lord.
Thank, thank you. Roll, roll call.
You have one more question on the motion?
I don't.
Um, Marcus Griffith.
Oh. Yes, top.
I, I, I don't want to get into weeds, but, um, knowing the, um, the activities that go on at the Dole Center, um, the performances, I should say, that go on at the Dole Center, um, I noticed with my wife having her performances there, um, for the last fifteen years or so, that there's not a lot of space in the back of the stage area, so I'm kinda concerned where the grand piano would go and would that get in the way of, um, um, the stage activities. Um, so I'm not really concerned because I'm sure it'll be worked out, and, and I thank the donation of the, of the gift, but a grand piano is not something that's able to be moved very easily, and I'm just wondering if it's really a good fit for our Dole Center stage. So, I mean, again, I don't wanna, um, prohibit, um, the donation. A, a baby grand is wonderful, but, um, for dance programs with the revelators there, I'm just wondering how that's all gonna work, especially since there's no place to really slip it off to the side. So I'm just concerned about where it's gonna be, um, and how that's gonna all work out. It's not something we can lift very often either. So I don't want to get into weeds. We could talk to the recreation commissioner about that. Um, I think the donation is wonderful. We absolutely need a professional piano there. Um, I hope there's some maintenance allocation to go with it as well, so that it's tuned properly, so that when we have a real artist come in, they're not, uh, flabbergasted by an untuned piano. Um, I also wanna say that having multiple pianos at our church, um, that piano is gonna have to be locked so that children are not banging on it. We have to protect the asset that was provided to us in this donation. Pianos are not easy uh, to maintain, but I wanna thank, um, and I'm looking here for the names, um, Dr. Thomas and Dr. Lemel. Thank you. Thank you. The city with the arts that we have, um, can use that, um, piano very well. Thanks again.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Duarte.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilman Griffith.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council president Copeland.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number thirteen.
Madam President, I have an order, um, I have an ordinance granting permission to the Department of Recreation to sponsor an outdoor movie series. So moved.
Thank you.
On the question? Roll call.
Councilwoman Duarte.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilman Griffith.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
And council president Copeland.
Aye, and I would say that this is a creative way to do, do it. I remember the driving, oh, well, I'm out of order now. Never mind, continue, uh, Council.
Thank you for stopping yourself, Madam President.
Item fourteen.
I have an ordinance granting permission to the Department of Recreation to sponsor safe streets throughout the city. So moved.
I'm sorry, second.
On the question? Roll call.
Councilwoman Duarte.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilman Griffith.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council president Copeland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Public safety and codes?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a resolution of the, um, State Commission to Study Health and Environmental Effects of Wireless Radiation and Five G Technology. So moved.
Second. On the question? I, I have a question. So, uh, uh, this, now, the last little slide we had, wait, I got feedback. Let me turn my mic down. Hold on a second. All right. The last time, yeah, that's better, that we discussed this, there was a, um, a moratorium in it.
Yeah, this is not the same resolution.
Let me finish my question. Let me finish my question. And we, we wanted the, um, the contractor to look at it. I can't remember who the contractor was. Has that happened?
So, we have not hired, the co- what we, we need to do is put a, uh, in the very next city council meeting, put a, a resolution on to hire that council. This is just a resolution, I believe, that councilwoman, uh, Ferguson got as a sample. We reviewed it. It's just basically in support of the questions, uh, about concerning Five G with the state, which is uh, uh, innocuous, you know? Um, so, we reviewed it just for as, uh, approved as to form. It's fine. And then, um, on the next city council meeting, we would put, uh, on the legislation to enter into a contract with the consultant on this and have them look at the agreements that have already put, been put forth, and also to update our code. So, at the very next city council meeting, we would try, try to get that ordinance on. Uh, assuming, uh, the comptroller has transferred the funds and created a, a escrow account, uh, that's our hope.
Thank you, co-council, uh, councilwoman Ferguson.
Madam President, if I just may, um, so after the, um, uh, uh, the consultants are hired, then I would, I will be resubmitting the other legislation for them to review and to be submitted on the agenda for this body. But this is to support the position of the New York State Legislature, which is that, that a body be convened to look at the environmental and medical effects of Five G technology and radiation. And the, the state legislature is already well on its way, and this is our supportive legislation.
Which, which legisla- this is from a legislator or the legislator, the whole body?
Legislator, the whole body.
Cause if it was somebody I didn't like, I wasn't gonna vote for.
No, it's the body, the body.
Council, councilwoman Duarte. Councilwoman Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilman Griffith.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
And council president Copeland.
Aye.
Madam President, if I may, I'd like to request the clerk to kindly send a copy to, to the clerk, um, you know, at the state level to, to register our support.
Okay, so we have to, let me, I'll help you with this one. I know this part. So we're gonna send it to the clerk of the, of the assembly, the journal clerk, the, the speaker of the assembly, the majority leader of the senate, the governor, and the attorney general.
I, I knew, I knew you, I knew you knew that part.
The attorney general gets a copy.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I have an ordinance amending resolution number six, adopted June tenth, twenty twenty, entitled, "A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Accept Receipt of the Fiscal Year Two Thousand Nineteen Continuum of Care Funds and Execute Grant Funds." So moved.
Second.
On the question? Roll call. Oh, roll call.
Councilwoman Duarte.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilman Griffith.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
Council president Copeland.
Aye.
Thank you. Number seventeen.
I have an ordinance amending resolution number seven, adopted June tenth, twenty twenty, entitled, "A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Approve and Authorize Submission of the Twenty Twenty through Twenty Twenty Four Consolidated Plan and the Twenty Twenty through Twenty Twenty One Annual Action Plan and Ex- and expenditure of Community Development Block, Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership Program and Emergency Solutions Grant Funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development." So moved.
Second.
On the question? Uh, the, um, deputy commissioner wanted this to go to the board of estimate, and the last, when we passed it last time, it didn't have the board of estimate. So that's why the amendment. I thought the, the, the chair who asked so many questions would say that, but I digress. Roll call.
Councilwoman Duarte. I'm sorry, councilwoman, I missed you. How say you, council? Thank you. Councilwoman Ferguson.
Aye.
Thank you, councilman Griffith.
Aye.
And councilman Thompson.
Aye.
And council president Copeland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is there other, any other business? Uh, I think, um, Mayor, don't you have something to say? Under any, I mean, we're out of, the councils should go first, but while we have you here, I know you have something to say, to report.
Absolutely. Um, thank you so much, Madam President. Uh, one of our biggest challenges right now, um, especially when it comes to the Mount Vernon Urban Renewal Agency and our acceptance of CDBG, ESG, and home funds, um, which are used for the following, to provide essential social services to our residents around domestic violence, youth employment training, adult employment training, small business and economic development funds, feeding programs, um, community safety programs. These programs also pay rent to almost sixty families in Mount Vernon for rent, for almost sixty families in Mount Vernon, who are disabled, who have mental health, substance abuse, who are veterans, who have physical disabilities. These funds are can, are repeatedly sent back to the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development by the comptroller. We have a million dollars in funds right now that are hanging in the balance because the comptroller has continuously hit one button to reject the monies and send them back to HUD. And she uses the, um, reasoning that she is short staff and that a position, a temporary position in her office was defunded. She has two empty positions, one of first deputy comptroller, uh, and she also has a chief accountant position, which is empty. She can hire these positions. She can transfer money out of these positions, as she tells us to do repeatedly, to fund whatever needs that she has in her office. The same energy that it takes for her to reject funds, which have been approved by the City of Mount Vernon Urban Renewal Agency, the Westchester County Department of Planning has vetted these, um, funds and have also been approved by HUD. The same energy that it hits to reject these funds is the same amount of energy and time she needs to spend to push this, the button right next to it, to accept these monies. Right now, the Urban Renewal Agency, um, our cash flow for these funds and these programs is right around nine thousand dollars. We have been using other funds to pay the rent for almost sixty very vulnerable families in the city of Mount Vernon. These funds were given to us for rent eviction prevention. They were donated by another organization, and we've almost exhausted that one hundred thousand dollars, using that to pay the last three months' rent for these families, which should be coming from HUD, but again, she continues to send this money back. The city, uh, the Urban Renewal Agency has completed all of our requirements and obligations around the two thousand sixteen audit. We have our draft report. We will be working with our auditors to finalize and issue that report. We are audit ready for two thousand seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. Two thousand nineteen just ended. Um, so, you know, two thousand, audits are not usually ready to happen on January first. You have to close the books, so we are in the process of closing the books on two thousand nineteen. But I need for the council to understand and for the public to understand the gravity of what we are facing. Because she has continuously sent this money back, the two point eight million dollars that we have also been awarded and received award letters from HUD is also in jeopardy of being sent back. She has refused to process any federal funds through the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, and these funds and programs are deemed and targeted, targeted to serve the homeless, to prevent homelessness, to address a lot of social issues, to help our small businesses, and to provide for public safety supports. And the comptroller is rejecting these funds. Um, we, I, I cannot express, and I, I'm gonna say this again, I cannot express the level of gravity that we are dealing with. These are three million dollars in funding and regular funds that comes to the city of Mount Vernon. We have received an additional two point eight million dollars in funds, and so we are at risk of losing five point eight million dollars in fund because the comptroller refuses to do her job for a very arbitrary reason. We can continue to make excuses and we continue to try and dance around what she is doing, but we also have two million dollars because people are asking questions about paving, because the comptroller has refused to pay a two thousand eighteen bill for the past two years. Um, we also have two million dollars, well, let me not exaggerate, one million eight hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars of funding sitting right now in the New York State Department of Transportation that we cannot begin to draw down because the comptroller has still failed to pay a bill for paving from two thousand eighteen. She continues to put us in positions with vendors who charge us higher prices because they build, they, they build in, uh, the fact that we're not gonna pay them on time. And then she also causes a lot of vendors not to want to engage in doing business with the city of Mount Vernon because they know that it can take upwards of one, two, or three years to pay. Uh, and then she holds us hostage and tells us that we need to get more than one bid, but it's very hard to get more than one bid when you have burned bridges and burned relationships repeatedly with vendors. We submit our bills and we make every attempt to submit our bills to the comptroller's office. She refuses, repeatedly refuses acceptance of bills. She cancels appointments. Um, and, and she just micromanages. She cancels appointments, um, and, and she just micromanages to the point that the city is being held financially hostage. This is not political. We can try and politicize this, but when the residents wake up and we have to turn around and we have to express what the financial condition of the community is, it's going to be a real serious issue. So this is ongoing, and we have lost the accreditation for the Veterans Service Agency again because the comptroller has failed to allow us to process funds for the state um, and allow us to do the work that we're supposed to be doing in the Veterans Service Agency. So we, we are providing services to our veterans, but we have lost our accreditation again because of actions or inaction on behalf of the comptroller. I cannot trust that there are twenty commissioners, not twenty commissioners throughout the City of Mount Vernon can be wrong, and the comptroller is the only person in the city is right.
So why don't we talk about the reopening as on, let's end on a positive note.
Let's end on a positive note. So right now, we have gone through our first three phases, or we're in the third phase. The first phase of reopening focused on reopening construction projects, but what the public would be most familiar with is, uh, we had sidewalk or curbside pickup from retail stores. Uh, Phase Two brought in full service back to the retail store so people could go in for service. It also reestablished, um, the opening of beauty salons and barber shops as well as outside and rooftop dining for restaurants. We started Phase Three yesterday, and Phase Three added indoor dining for restaurants um, at fifty percent capacity. They still have to have social distancing, making sure that tables are six feet apart and that were used following CDC regulations and guidelines. Um, but we also added to the reopening of personal care businesses, which are nail salons, uh, tattoo parlors, spas. Yes, I am going to get my really bad nails done. I'm happy about that. Uh, but we encourage people to make sure that you go and get an appointment as we are, um, are, are, all of our beauty and barber salons, nail salons, and any of those personal care organizations have to operate with CDC regulations and guidelines. And so they can't just have drop-ins and cause the store to be too crowded because social distancing will not be maintained. We have a resiliency task force, um, that is comprised of our economic, um, development team as well as our Police Department, our Fire Department, our Building Department, our Emergency Operations, um, Center because we are going around to each of the businesses and ensuring that they have completed their mandated New York State Health, um, Health Plan, Health and Safety Pa- Plan through Governor Cuomo's office. All businesses, uh, are required to do a Health and Safety Plan to, and, and affirm that they are aware of the state guidelines around the reopening to ensure the safety of the public and to ensure the stability of our economy. We've already seen across the country where people have opened up too close too quickly without any real compliance and guidelines, and their cases are skyrocketing. So here in the City of Mount Vernon, we have been very, very progressive, and we have taken a lot of initiative to work with our business community to understand these guidelines, but also to develop compliance measures and put them in place to ensure the public safety as well as the financial stability of our community. And just lastly, we are working with them also in providing, uh, our businesses and providing technical assistance and support in understanding New York Forward and how they might be able to gain, um, financial support and grants through the New York State, um, Empire State Development Corporation. Small businesses are eligible for, um, grants. If you have twenty staff or less and you have three million dollars or less in revenues, then small businesses can apply for New York Forward funds of a hundred million dollars. We are working with Lehman College, their Small Business Development, uh, Center, as well as Trulend, um, the Women's Enterprise Development Center, the New York's, the New York Empire State Development Program Incorporated, and several other organizations to provide free technical assistance to our small businesses, to our not-for-profits, and also small landlords are eligible for this financial assistance. So we are doing our, our due diligence. We are really expanding our services without expanding the number of our staff. We are working overtime without being paid, but we wanna make sure that we are providing the services that will ensure the safe reopening of our businesses, the health of our community, and the stabling, um, stabilization of our economy.
Um, so I've, this past week, I've been in Harlem. I've been in Rockland, and I've been in Brooklyn. So their streets are a lot wider than ours. However, they, they're big enough that they can have tables in the, in the street without blocking the street. I don't know that we can do that, but...
There are, there are a few locations that we have identified where we might be able to do that, especially on like Thursday nights, because Thursday nights, Fridays, Saturdays, and maybe Sundays, that we might be able to do that in a few locations. Um, one up like near Grammington and Grand, another one down. Um, the Chase Parking Lot is something that we're looking at on Fifth Avenue. We're trying to find, um, creative areas that we might be able to, uh, corral several of our restaurants together to work with, to provide open dining in those spaces. We, we are definitely looking for ways to expand the capacity of our restaurants to serve people. People are desperate to get back out and experience some site, some sense of normalcy um, and socialization. We are social cre- creatures. And if we don't provide for opportunities for socialization, people will find their own. Thus fireworks and some of the kind of hanging out that we've seen in the street because people are, are, it's warm, and people have been stuck in the house now for almost four months. So we are desperately looking for partnerships and, and locations where we could expand dining opportunities. And that is also what we're doing with Safe Streets, um, through the Recreation Department. We wanna make sure that we're identifying different blocks that instead of residents just closing down streets and us not knowing and that impacting our ability to respond to public safety emergencies, that the city is doing that in coordination with the Recreation Department, the community, different organizations, churches, so that we can provide safe alternatives for our young people and our families to enjoy this warm weather. So we are, like I said, being very proactive and being innovative, and we've done the same with, uh, online services for the Youth Bureau, um, to be able to provide summer youth employment. So we are working hard. Uh, the fireworks are still a challenge. We're hearing a little less of them. We do have the Police Department and the Fire Department working together. Uh, we've put together a list of frequent places that are called in, and we're trying to do education and enforcement. We're not arresting people. We are not targeting people. We are not trying to hurt our citizens. But we have citizens with PTSD, seniors, children, dogs, children who are autistic. Um, these M80s, these ash cans, they, this, this professional-level fireworks are very loud and, and disrespectful to the point of being used up until 2:00 AM. So that can't be allowed. You know, sparklers, we're not worrying about sparklers. I was driving down the street and a kid pitched out a fire flamethrower, and it was literally flames that burst out into the street, span around. And if a car is driving down the street and drives over flames, lit flames, then that can cause a very big accident. And then Yonkers, we did see a multifamily, um, home lost because fireworks were shot into that backyard and it set on fire, and we haven't had a lot of rain. And so if, if these fireworks land in the wrong place, we're going to see fires throughout our community. So we understand that people, again, are feeling cabin fever. We understand that people wanna celebrate and enjoy themselves. Um, but this has become a nationwide issue, and, and we're not pushing it off on a nationwide issue. We are trying to address it locally. But thirty to fifty calls regarding fireworks tonight are very hard to manage when we are still dealing with car break-ins, when we're dealing with assaults, uh, you know, mental health issues, homelessness, crimes, open drinking. We are trying to cover everything. Please know that, that, uh, we have spoken with our Police Department, and, you know, the group that's going out is really focusing on education around the public safety issue of this, the noise pollution of it, and being, and the quality of life as opposed to locking people up. We're not looking to lock people up. We are in a time in our country where we wanna make sure that we're building bridges between police and community and not finding, um, reasons to, to harm the community. But at the same time, we have to ensure the public safety. We have to ensure quality of life, um, and we have to make sure that we're taking care of all of our residents. So that's, that's where we are, and we are working vigilantly to improve, um, quality of life here in Mount Vernon.
Um, thank you. Did any of, of the council have any questions? Councilwoman Ferguson? Unmute yourself. Unmute yourself.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for, um, for that update. Um, and it's, you know, it's good to hear you talk a little bit about, um, how we transition um, in terms of reimagining our police, um, our Public Safety Department based on the directives of the mayor. And so I've, um, submitted a letter to, um, to everyone, including you. I hope you've gotten a copy, Madam Mayor, that is talking about how we can work together to do, to work on what, exactly what Governor Cuomo is directing us in terms of reimagining public safety. I had a, a short discussion with our Police Commissioner, Commissioner Scott, um, this week, and he shared some information with me, um, and, you know, some of the plans he has in terms of us working together as a team, both legislator, the, the, um, the, the department and the community as a whole, which is a directive of the governor, so that we can develop a plan that can be submitted on behalf of our city um, in terms of how we reimagine public safety, the interaction between police and community, and what we want to see for Mount Vernon, you know, the, the jewel of Westchester. Um, and so, you know, I look forward to engaging that and, you know, engaging you in that and engaging all of you in that, um, in terms of how we will conduct, convene some community forums, um, so that we have community representation in everything that we do and the plan that we will ultimately submit, which is due next year.
Absolutely. We have already engaged the Obama Foundation, and we took the pledge around community policing and transformative practices within our Policing Department. Um, our Commissioner Scott is, is very progressive in his approach around community policing. Um, he came in and one of the first things that he did in February is that they reviewed and they revised the use-of-force policy that we have here in the City of Mount Vernon. So that was done in February. It is our Commissioner Scott that has led the effort in the Police Department around ensuring that charges are brought against police officers who abuse power. Um, it is our Commissioner Scott who has met with anyone who has filed a civilian complaint with the City of Mount Vernon against the police. He has led those efforts. I have worked for over twenty years with the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services, the United States Department of Justice, and the United States Office of Juvenile Justice Delinquency Programs, and the Department of Justice Community Oriented Policing Strategies Programs. You know, I've run alternative to incarceration programs and have been part of the New York State reform around bail, around use of force, and working also with our Senator Jamal Bailey, um, who chairs the New York State Senate, um, Public Safety and Codes Committee. Um, we did put together a transition team around public safety, who has been working since November. It has profession, professionals, and it has community-level representation, um, on it. They continue to work and address, um, you are more than invited, Councilwoman Ferguson, to participate. I, I would like to get a date certain with you. Um, that's something that we had reached out to do, and whether it was COVID or whatever that kept that from happening, um, things are opening back up. And so we look forward to an opportunity to sit with you because we do have very exciting, very exciting, very progressive, very evidence-based and evidence-informed, um, changes that we are planning and we are already starting to implement and bringing to our Police Department. We are in the process of interviewing, um, for hiring our, our two deputy commissioners in the Police Department, uh, and these are great opportunities, again, to bring innovative practices with people who have proven histories, um, of working in policing and community policing to bring public safety to Mount Vernon. That was a commitment of mine when I ran. It is a commitment of mine even more now that I am mayor, and please know that we are very serious uh, about ensuring that we are operating policing in a way in this very small but very dense and urban community that can eventually stand as, as a model. So we, we promoted a sergeant, um, four detectives, and brought on and three, transferred in three police officers today. These three police officers are all experienced, coming from other communities, and have been trained and trained well. There is not another academy that is going to be offered, um, in policing this year, and there is not a new civil service test that is being offered by the state. As it is right now this year, we are at the bottom of our civil service list, so we're not looking, and none of those people are from our community, so we're not looking to hire off the bottom of a social, uh, of a civil service list. And that's why some of our new police that we are bringing on are transfers that have already been trained, already been certified as police officers. That is saving us money, and we're bringing in people who already, um, have some skills, you know, def- and definite experience and history, um, to help us transform our department. I, I think right now, if you see the lineup of people that we're gonna bring into our top tier of leadership at the Police Department, then it will be an incredible, um, diverse ethnically, socially, and gender-wise department that no one in the State of New York can even boast to, to come close to the diversity that we're gonna have in our police leadership.
Okay, my, my battery's dying up here in the memorial room. I didn't bring my charger with me, so talk quick because these are our personal computers, but that's another story for another time. So I probably, most likely, will not be at the next council meeting because as you all may, may or may not know, I'm having knee surgery next Wednesday. I may, you know, if I'm called to, if I have to vote on something that's of great importance to me, I will zoom in, but I ask for your prayers and my recovery and, um, looking forward to better knee days ahead. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn?
There's a second. Thank you. Roll call.
Councilwoman Duarte.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Aye.
Councilman Griffith.
Aye.
Councilman Thompson.
Aye.
And Council President Copeland.
I, just because you know where I'm having surgery does not mean you can show up to the room unannounced. We don't know. I know, exactly. This meeting is a jerk. God bless you all. All the best, all the best.
Good night, everyone.
Good luck. All the best.
And thank you to the public for joining us. Please join the council for its next council meeting on July 8th at 7:00 PM. Stay safe, everyone.